This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Call to order the local Southampton School Committee meeting. This is our regular monthly meeting for April, second Wednesday of the month, 6:00 PM. All five members of the committee are present as well as our superintendent, our building principal, and our business administrator. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes of March 12th, March 21st, March 26th, and April 1st. Any objection to taking them up as a packet? Hearing none, is there a motion to take them up as a packet?
So moved.
Motion made by Dylan, seconded by Kim, under discussion. I'll just point out that everybody did their pre-read, that was excellent.
Yep.
Awkward silence on the live TV.
Riveting, riveting television, John.
Wait, where's Kim?
Hearing no discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passed unanimously. Public comment, any member of the public wishing to discuss an item that's not currently on the agenda may do so now. Seeing no one, circulation of warrants, I believe we're continuing those electronically. No announcements or respondents. We'll move to the principals' report.
Okay, the principals' report for April 9th, 2025 is in your packet. Our enrollment is at 482 students. This is two down from last month. We lost a preschool student and a fifth grader. April is Autism Acceptance Month. We will be having an Autism Acceptance Spirit Week, the week of April 14th to the 18th, which is next week. I believe parents may have received something today. Awesome. Grade four held their trunk showcase on Friday, April 4th. Students in grade four learned about different explorers and created artifacts of their travels. Parents were invited in to see these wonderful presentations. The Norris PTO hosted bingo night on Friday night. It was very well attended, over 150 people signed up to come. I went for a little bit on Friday. It was, the kids were having an awesome time. I think everybody won bingo at least once. Students in grades three through eight have, I'm sorry, three through six, completed ELA MCAS testing. And then we have a couple makeups to do before, next Thursday is the last day. And then math starts the Tuesday after vacation. As part of our ongoing learning about inclusionary practices at Norris, the To Teach Global consultant is providing virtual coaching to teams of special education and general education teachers. That happened yesterday via Zoom. So each team of teachers that are working together were able to meet with the consultant for about 35 minutes, talk about how they're doing on their goals, what questions they have, or what they need some support with. And the town of Southampton is applying for a $50,000 feasibility study for a cooling center at Norris. It's called the MVP program. It's engineering study that if awarded will assess the feasibility of establishing a cooling and air quality center. The center would serve as a vital resource for students and teachers during extreme heat and humidity while also providing a safe climate-controlled environment for seniors and individuals with respiratory conditions during the summer months when school is not in session. I guess I copied that twice, sorry. But this was, I was approached by Chris Fowles to see if I wanted to write a letter in support of it, so I did. And I think the other department heads did as well. So that's out there. It's just for a feasibility study at this time.
Okay. Any questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, we'll go to the superintendent's report.
I don't know if anybody has any questions, but one of the things I wanted to specifically bring to your attention is that the regional agreement for Hampshire Regional was one of the first documents that I brought to review for the sake of revising and ensuring that all the amendments and changes that had been made over time were actually captured in the document. So we are working with Russell Dupere and his office to ensure that we are in line with all those changes over time that had been made but weren't captured in the document. Additionally, we are taking input from the state and where we are right now is we've met twice with Russell and his office. They have generated a tracked change document with Kim Yusa, my administrative assistant, and we are finalizing that. The next step in the process will be to bring it to the Hampshire Regional School Committee for their review, and then it'll have to go to each of the towns for approval. I don't anticipate that it's going to be anytime soon. We have to work through the process and I just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware that we are making progress on it and that we're certainly on a parallel track to other work that's going on, making sure we're moving forward in a positive way. The other thing I wanted to bring to your attention was, in the packet, there's, again from Dupere Law Offices, it's a document I received January 15th, and it talked about the Title IX updates. There were some questions about Title IX and that, the updates, and I just wanted to bring this so that people could take a read and look at what the lawyers, how they interpreted the changes that were made. One of the questions that we've heard at many of our meetings is, you know, what about, you know, are all of our students still protected? And so what Attorney Dupere says in this document is that really the protections afforded under the 2020 version, or the 24 version of Title IX included discrimination on the basis of sex characteristics, sexual orientation, gender identity. But when we go back to the 2020 version, those are now underneath Title VI. So it's just, the protections are still there, it's just differently insured. And so I guess from my perspective as the superintendent, all of our students are indeed protected either under Title IX or under Title VI. We are responsible to ensure that no one's being harassed or discriminated against, and we have processes in place to keep all of our students safe. So I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. I thought I had shared it in January when it came, but I wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of it so that they could at least answer some initial questions that they might have about the change that came out in January.
Questions, comments?
Well, last month, my biggest question was exactly what you just addressed, Vito, was just making sure that all of our students are still protected one way or the other. So I'm satisfied with that.
Excellent, thank you. And I thought that might help. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
My question isn't for the superintendent, but for the other members of the committee who are not at the Hampshire Regional level. Does everybody have access or seen a copy of the redline version of the Hampshire Regional amendment?
No.
The working district. So if we could just make that available to the committee, I know I've had it through the chair's update, and I thought I shared it, but maybe I didn't. But if we could just share that with the other committee members?
Of our tract for the Hampshire Regional Agreement?
Redline version. So that everybody has time to look at it.
Okay.
Yep, that's all.
That has to go to the town, not to us, right? That has to go like to town?
Yeah.
But I think as committee members?
We'll be good to know.
At least be aware.
Okay.
You know, try to build support for it at any time.
Well, we haven't seen that in Hampshire. I think that we're waiting for a more opportune time when it makes sense because with tracked changes, those documents are 50 pages long and very hard to read. So our understanding is that we would get it as it got a little bit closer to its final track.
What Attorney Dupere suggested is that he would complete this segment of the work, making sure that all the tracked changes were there, and then have a clean version.
So I guess when the clean version's available?
Absolutely.
Whether it's through the chair or just last email to all school committee members?
I'll do it.
You know, yeah.
I'd still like to see the redline if possible. I understand, I understand.
Speaking as the attorney on the committee.
I understand it's a lot of work, I understand the 50-page document, I understand it's a mess, but I would like to see that.
Well, if you just get, you get sent two documents, and then you can choose what you're going to read.
Yeah.
Okay.
I will. All right. Chair's report, it's all about the budget. I don't think we necessarily have to rehash any of that, other than I will say that last night was a joint session of the Southampton Select Board and the Finance Committee. And we've had a resignation on the Select Board, so we're down to four. There were only three of us there last night. And the full Finance Committee was there, three, there's two open seats. I feel confident in saying that the Select Board is unanimous in making this override question a ballot question and not deciding it at the Select Board levels. Meaning, the Select Board is going to put forward the override question to town meeting, which is the first step to get to the ballot. Finance wasn't necessarily unanimous, but it was more in talking points, they didn't actually take a vote. But the first step as a town is that we have to go to town meeting. So there are three ways we can propose the question at town meeting. And we discussed it last night, but we did not make a decision, and we do not have to make a decision until April 15th. And the significance with April 15th is that you need to require, you need to provide the citizens a 35-day notice of a ballot override question. So even though town meeting isn't going to happen until May 6th, town, our ballot election is already scheduled for May 20th. So if you back up for May 20th, April 15th, we have to say this question may be coming forward. If it fails at town meeting, it gets pulled off the ballot. If it passes town meeting, it's on the ballot, we've adhered to the 35-day notice, and we don't have to hold a special election. Individually speaking, my thought is, people already plan to go to the polls on the 20th, so let's keep it on the 20th, let's not have a special election 15 days later to delay this.
Yeah.
So the Select Board has the sole authority to do that, and that, we agreed to do that last night. Where the concern comes up from speaking tonight as chair of the School Committee and not as vice chair of the Select Board, as chair of the School Committee, there are three options now at the town meeting level. The vote can go in three ways. One, option one, which is the option I'm advocating for, it's a single motion. It has the contingent budget, which includes the override, and then the non-contingent. So at town meeting, when we generally have 100 to 120 people, they would just vote to send both of them on one vote to the ballot. And it's a yes or no vote. If the question passes, the override goes through. If the question fails, the override fails and we go to the step-down budget. There was discussion from members present on the Finance Committee that it shouldn't be a single vote, there should be a double vote, which in essence allows the ability to kill it at town meeting and never get the override to the ballot. My individual argument is, this issue is not something that the Select Board in itself should decide, and it's not something that, because there's only technically four of us representing 6,000 people, that this is too great of an issue for four elected people to pick, that it should go to the ballot. But we have to go through town meeting, and again, now you generally only have 120, and if, you know, if the supporters of the override are unable to attend that night, it could die right there and never make it to the ballot. So, and then the other option is, it goes to town meeting, but instead of a town-wide override, it's singly, it's specifying the school, and it's drawing it out as a department override. So option two and three to me don't work because they already have the ability for the matter to be killed at town meeting. And I believe that this issue is too great for a town meeting decision, that it needs to go to the ballot box and allow all eligible voters to weigh in on it. So we're going to continue that debate and discussion Tuesday night, and we have up until April 15th to make a decision on how that's going to be presented. Anybody have any questions on that piece?
We have nothing to say about it. The Select Board makes the decision, yes.
Ultimately, the Select Board casts the vote.
So, but it might be helpful for us to be there on Tuesday to answer questions?
Advocate one way or the other.
Support, whatever we need to do. So you want to make it an override question for funding the town in general?
So option, no, no. Option one says, do you agree to send the following to the ballot? This is the, a yes vote approves the override, a no vote approves the contingent budget.
All right.
So it's one question, yes or no, versus traditionally what we've done is, here's the budget, we pass that, now here's the override.
Okay.
And we're putting in two votes at town meeting.
All right, so it's going to be one vote?
Well, that's what I'm advocating for.
Right, so you're advocating for one question, that is, a yes vote means that we get the override budget for the school, a no vote means we get the contingent with the possible loss of 10 FTEs?
Well, there would definitely be an $800,000 reduction.
Right, so 10 FTEs, the supply lines being cut, and all the other things that were mentioned at the public hearing.
Correct.
Okay, and so...
So going to a single vote limits the ability for town meeting to kill it.
Okay, do we, we never, we didn't approve a contingent, no, we didn't approve the second, like if the override doesn't pass. But you have, the Select Board has that number to be able to say?
Right now, it's sitting at the 4.05.
Okay, so that number would be made public during the meeting, then?
It'd be on the second portion of that ballot, yes.
All right.
And it would show, because it's by department, it would show that Norris would go from X to X minus 800,000.
Okay, and have you, since our budget hearing, have you done anything with that information that you put together about how Chapter 70 has been used and?
From, no, not with that, but from what I can see, because vocational education is included in the Norris net school spending and not Hampshire Regional's net school spending, we, they're meeting the minimum.
Oh yeah, I'm not worried about that, no. What I'm saying is the use of Chapter 70 funds to cover other town expenses rather than paying for schools.
We haven't explored, we haven't dug into that any deeper, other than the town's defenses, we're meeting the net school spending, which is the general fund obligation plus...
Oh, yeah, I understand what that is. It's also, I mean, that's really a floor, not a ceiling.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
John, so if the 4% increase for Norris budget is here, and that is included, the town has decided they can pay that, right?
Yep.
And then we're asking 14%. Is the override the difference between those two or the whole amount?
Yes.
Shouldn't it be the difference between the two, so it shouldn't be 800,000, right?
Correct, you're right.
Okay.
Mathematically...
So it's like 14%.
14%. Right, because we were asking for 18, right, or 17?
We were asking for 14.
14, so it's 10%.
So it's 10%, which would make the cost to the taxpayers different.
Right, and, right, and the discussion or argument is that if once you, a 4% increase to our budget, to the Norris budget, roughly $280,000. Our contractual obligation is $330,000. Now, that is a little skewed because we're alleviating contractual services by $150,000, and we're adding to BCBA for about 80, 85,000?
87,000.
So if you back that 85,000 out of that 330, that's really our contractual obligation, right? And then there's an offset.
But we have to have the BCBA, that's not a, that's what we want.
And it's really a cost savings.
But it's a requirement, yeah, it's a cost savings because it helps us keep students in...
Right, but when you look at the number, it's 333,000, which is 6.6. So if you just say it's contractual obligations, they're going to say, which I'm sure the union would disagree because they'd be correct, that why did the school committee give the union a 6.6% increase? We didn't. Right. We're shifting from non-payroll dollars, we're moving a $150,000 expense here, saying we can do that with a payroll job, which is adding 80-plus thousand dollars to this. So you've got to back that out of that 330 and then recalculate. So no, the school committee did not award a 6.6% increase to the union.
Just to be clear on that, I ran those numbers when we were looking at this, because A, being part of the negotiation, but also for this purposes of tonight, we negotiated, including steps, columns, and COLA increases. It just, it's like just over 3%.
Okay.
So we were fiscally responsible, I believe we were fiscally responsible in making that determination of what would the town could afford when we signed that contract two and a half years ago.
And the other large issue that's impacting us right now is the special education cost, which is kind of like a pendulum, right? Because when the pendulum swings back, because circuit breaker is in arrears, we're gaining the benefit, right? Less expense, more reimbursement coming in. But we're on the other side of the pendulum now. The expenses are going up, and our circuit breaker trails by at least a year those expenses. And our special ed, even with the $150,000 reduction, our collective special education went up 280-some-odd thousand dollars. So you add those three together, now you're almost at 6,000. We have our central office expenses increased by 190,000, of which 90,000, we know, hopefully, is the second year of one-time money for the forensic audit. So if all goes well, a year from now, that number's going to fall out, right, and come out. So now you're at seven.
Yeah.
Last year, this current year, we put in 970,000 of, you know, I'll call it grants into the budget to offset it, and this year we're only able to put in 730 because of cuts. So you add all that together, and we have a $900,000 issue.
Yeah.
And we're covering some of that, but we can't cover all of it. And I think that needs to be the speaking points.
I agree.
To get the public on board with it.
Yep. Well, for the public to understand it, I mean, that's the whole thing.
I'll come back to you.
The public has to understand why these things are happening, because if all you're doing is just looking at a number?
Yeah.
It seems like, oh my goodness, how could that be?
You have to have a story to tell.
Right.
Right. John?
When the question goes on the ballot and it says yes is for the override and no is for the 4.5, will the 4.5 include like the loss of 10 teachers in that?
It will not be on the question itself. You cannot give a summary, nor can you give a, which interesting, we found this out last night, and I guess I knew this, but I didn't, I forgot it. The state, when the state question comes on, those are citizens petitions, so there's always, a yes vote means, and a no, you cannot do that at the town level because it's the Select Board putting the question on and not a citizens petition. All it can say is, do you approve a budget of X or do you approve a budget of Y?
But can we talk about that at town meeting?
We can talk about it at a town meeting.
We can also stand out with posters outside.
We can stand outside the polling place.
We'll have signs.
We can, we can not take a position as an elected board, we cannot say, you should support this because of this. What we should say, what we can say is, this is a level service budget with no additions other than, you know, and it only includes contractual services, you know, basically what I just said, boom, boom, boom. And the impact, you almost want to stay away from the impact because you can't get into the details as a school committee.
No, but parents can.
As long as the parent isn't a school committee member.
Correct, but parents can.
Parents can, and the union is free to do what they choose to do and, you know, take to social media.
Yep.
I'd also add that our central office costs went up because our town is so popular and our parents are, you know, populating our schools very well, while the other schools are decreasing in enrollment, which is affecting our apportionment of funds to the high school as well as to the central office. That is a talking point for the budget, but you'll have to be aware of.
Yeah, I was of that same opinion, but somebody, and I haven't gone back to check the data, said that actually Southampton's numbers are shrinking.
That's true.
I wasn't going to call you out on it, but...
But, but that could change because there are some big classes coming up.
Yeah, and all you have to do, all you have to do is look at the, it's not difficult for Southampton. The number of building permits being polled is increasing year over year. You know, the building commissioner reported, we're waiting for a final report, and, but the number of spring permits that are being pulled for home buildings is higher than higher and higher, which you've got to think 50% of those homes are going to have children in them, you know, and maybe only 50% of them are of the preschool age, but, you know, there's, there's cost.
And then the fact that your new growth is going up, that's one of the factors that they use in calculating the minimum required contribution. So they're looking at the change in your municipal growth factor. If you are going up, it's adding a, it's adding additional requirement for a minimum.
Yeah.
So sometimes it's not so much the budget driving it, although you know what the budget numbers are, but it's the formula that is used by the state to calculate your minimum requirement, and then the regional agreement kicks in for anything with that.
I also think too, if you look at, if you look at the state website where it talks about net school spending and all that, there's hardly any communities that that's what they're funding their schools at.
Correct.
You go down that list, and 351 towns in this state, I don't know how many, if, I didn't see any, I'm not saying there aren't any, but almost every single thing that I saw, it was, and this is how much we're going over.
Yeah, so...
You can't really run a school just at three flags.
And I know they're, you know, they're always talking about reevaluating Chapter 70 funds and how they calculate it. I mean, the one thing I just can't get my head around, and right now it's the law of the town, or of the state, where because, I think because we're so unique, that we own our children up till sixth grade, and then we transfer responsibility to Hampshire Regional, and because of how we calculate central office, central office is based on jurisdiction of the superintendent versus Hampshire Regional is only jurisdiction of the children 7 through 12, that I would argue that vocational expense should not be borne at the elementary level, and currently by state law it is. Those are ninth through 12th graders. You can shut the door.
I'm just going to shut it.
Yeah, shut the door, thanks, Kim.
That, that cost, that cost has to do with children that are ninth through 12th. That's at the Hampshire Regional level. And so that's almost a million-two that gets chopped out of Norris, and we're one of the few communities that are set up the way we are, right? Williamsburg, what's happened, have the same issue, but other than Silver Lake, I'm not sure there's still anybody else that breaks it up the way we do. So it's the 80/20 rule, right? We're the 20%, and it's one area where we're just, the cost should still count, but I don't think it should hit the elementary school. But the law is set, that's all I have for Chair's report.
All right.
Anything else? Okay. Hampshire Regional School Committee?
I participated by phone, and it was really hard to hear, so I don't know if Vito wants to say what happened on Monday.
Well, there are, the MASC has brought forward a number of policies for review that look at technology and many things in that area. And so much of the meeting was focused on first reads of the MASC policies, which turned into discussions about the consequence or the ramifications of those things, and that dominated much of the meeting. Other than that, I wouldn't say that there was much to report on.
Okay.
Budget stuff, yeah.
Yeah. PTO?
PTO is not meeting till next week, so I have nothing to update you on.
School Council?
They're meeting on the 29th.
Okay.
Thank you.
Collaboration for Educational Services Update?
Their last meeting was the same night as their budget meeting, but I had a chance to review the executive summary from that meeting. Budget continues to be an issue over there in the same way that is for a lot of us. Unfortunately, a lot of their funding is coming from federal sources and grants as well. The good news is, they're not doing any more staff reductions this fiscal year, but I wouldn't be shocked if they're looking again towards next fiscal year doing additional staff reductions. I would also expect, and it's not in this report, but I would expect that with the reduction in services across the state Health and Human Services Department, that you wouldn't, you're not going to see some sort of trickle-down there as well affecting youth mental health services and youth crisis needs and supporting schools. The schools itself are not obviously funded through that, but the ancillary services that go with them are. They continue to do the good work that they're doing with the HEC Academy, Mount Tom, Three Rivers, and those programs are continuing to plug along. That's basically the update from them.
Questions, comments, concerns? Okay. Select Board, I covered another of the chairs. There is a meeting tomorrow afternoon for the Capitol Committee. I looked at it, I don't recall seeing any Norris request. Okay.
Well, I do have things, but I wasn't given the packet yet. Scott had said a few months ago it was coming, and I did not receive it.
So I believe the email, as one of the Capitol Committee members, we're having the initial meeting tomorrow, and I'm pretty sure he worded the agenda that, here's what I have so far. Additional departments may be submitting, but I would just say we only have until the 15th to make a decision. So if things are ready, I might want to fire him off in the morning.
Okay.
And maybe copy myself as chair so I can make sure it comes in. Budget and Finance Team update. Any highlights?
I'm going to give you a couple of highlights. The first thing I would say is, for the warrant for this week, I don't know if everybody signed it yet. I think Dylan did. I don't know if anybody else has signed it, and we need to move that forward. And if there are any reasons why it's not being signed, if there's any questions.
There was one question, and I was looking at it on my phone, it was too small for me to tell.
Okay.
It was, the cumulative warrant's a little over $400,000.
Yes.
And I know the answer to this, but I'm going to ask you.
Okay.
Is that because the amount that's owed to the town in arrears is included in that or is it separate?
No. No. But it is, I mean, it's great that you noticed it's larger than typical. And what is included is the first, second, and third quarter 2025 central office costs. We wanted to make sure.
It's the catch-up for the current year.
It's a catch-up for the current year through, yeah, it's not addressing the arrears at all. It's just taking the budget, dividing it by four, and putting three quarters of it in. And then the last one will come at the end of the second quarter, I mean, fourth quarter.
I'll sign it after the meeting.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Then the other thing included in your packet, we don't need to discuss it, is some information on FY '24, and we may, on the FY '24 central office costs, and John's going to bring that up later under new business, and I'll address it then. The other thing I want to say is, just generally speaking, we're moving forward in a positive way in the central office. One thing I offer as an example of that is that we did submit what we needed to for E and D, for Chesterfield-Goshen, for the smaller regional. We submitted it on Friday. On Monday, they came back with two questions, and on Tuesday, it was certified. And when I talked with Jay Sullivan at DESI, he said he thought it was a testament to the fact that the DOR has more confidence in the numbers that were submitted. And I'd like to take credit for that, but I can't entirely. That's also because we have Eric Kinsherf as the consulting accountant, and they've worked with him, so they really have a level of confidence. So we'll take credit for some of the hard work, but I really think it's because they've worked with him before. Then Lisa and I will continue, I'll distribute something for your packet, won't talk about it too much, but we're going to continue on looking at FY '25 expenditures and where we're projecting to be by the end of the year. So I think I gave you a look at it last week, and it looked like we might be over. So we want to get together with Lisa and Bradley again to see if there's any more grant money that can be applied and where we are with that.
Do you think, before the pandemic, way back in time.
Yes.
Quarterly, we used to get budget transfer requests that we would have to vote and sign off on. Do you, do you think there might be anything in the May meeting where we could kind of start shifting things?
Yes. I do.
And at least as a committee, see it in buckets?
Yes.
Sign off and get it in there for still in June?
Yes. I do think so. I think for the May meeting.
Part of, you're over here, you're under here.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Exactly. And so the only other thing I wanted to mention is, on the good news side, there was a math teacher opening at Hampshire Regional, and it's been filled by the Assistant Business Administrator, who, on the bad news side, means.
He used to be a teacher.
You know, he was 17 years a teacher, and I think that he found being in the other side of it, on the dark side, it was a little bit different, and the hours and the commitment given his family. So it's, he's intelligent, he's a great guy, and I'm glad for Hampshire Regional, I'm not so happy for ourselves.
Starting at Hampshire Regional September?
He'll start last week in August, and he'll be, he'll be with us.
So you still have the services.
We have him through.
BP training and some other things.
Yeah. And so we, we have him through the beginning of July, so like around the first or fifth of July. And so I'm trying to come up with some creative ways. One of them, I don't, I think I have to come back to the school committees for like approval of a job description, but I'm trying to get a summer intern. I think we've talked before that the DOR has noted that there's just a real shortage of accounting, municipal accountants. And so they have created this program with the, with the community colleges for municipal school-focused accounting. And it's a fellowship that they include in their training. And so I've become aware of a student who was at Berkshire Community College, who has gone through the fellowship program, and then the DOR tries to find them assignments. And through one reason or another, I've, I've become aware of him, and I've, he's now at UMass, and he's got like a 3.840 at UMass in accounting, and has the municipal. So I'd like to be able to grab him and have him augment our, our staffing. But we're also going to go out as soon as possible to advertise for the open position.
Okay.
Okay. But I think that's the highlights.
Any, any questions? The line, I thought there was a line item on our budget that said any, or on our agenda, any other business, but it's not here, but you've already mentioned it. So I'll just bring it up now.
Okay.
So the, the issue that Don referred to is that outstanding amount, 400 and change, that's owed. The, they've been in contact, Central Office has been in contact with DESI, and there's some options on the table that could be explored. DESI's recommendation is that they will honor any agreement between the Chair of the Southampton School Committee and the Chair of Hampshire Regional School Committee that come, come to an agreement on some sort of payment plan, assuming that the town can't pay 100% in year one. So I would ask, obviously, there'd be more details come back for ratification, but I would ask the committee to vote to empower myself as Chair of Southampton to enter into negotiations with the Chair of the Hampshire Regional School Committee to define some sort of MOU on how that money will be paid back and the details related to it for DESI approval. Motion made by Margaret. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kim. Discussion?
I assume any MOU would then come back to the committee for.
For ratification. Yeah. Yep.
I also want to mention that I believe there will be an article, I don't know if you've talked about it within the Select Board, there would be an article on this town meeting warrant authorizing the payment of the first installment. And maybe, depending on what the attorneys say, including this agreement.
I would think the article would have to.
Refer to the agreement.
Tom's still the chair, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would think Tom and I would have to come to an agreement prior to April 15th.
Yes.
So that the exact wording.
Exactly.
And then the town people vote on, and then that becomes binding.
Exactly. So it doesn't give.
Which means the 14th or so, there may be a special school committee meeting to the purpose to take up that one vote.
Sure, for that before the 15th, yeah.
That one issue.
Yep.
Okay.
Did we have all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
First reading, Title IX Policy Revisions Updated 2022. I think we've had the first reading already. This is the second reading, because it already came before us once, and we asked it to go back.
Are these the same?
Is it the same, same as we were given last?
Any change from last month?
No.
Just highlight.
And what I did want to bring your attention to is the second paragraph in this, this document that I shared with you, because it really, there was a question asked about, of me and how I'm going to proceed as the Title IX Coordinator. And this paragraph, really, there's no equivocation there. You know, based on the ruling effective, immediately all Title IX investigations revert to the process released under 2020 version of the law.
And you're referring to the document on the Dupree Law Office's piece in the letterhead dated January 15, 2025, signed by all three attorneys?
Yes.
Okay.
So everything that follows is what we saw last month?
Yes.
But we didn't really do the first, so this, tonight's just the first read.
I'm, I'm fine with that. Yep. I would want to move forward. Basically, the update is we have the, the opinion of our attorneys attached.
And there was another opinion that we saw too somewhere that mirrors this about students are still protected because of Title VI.
So if there's nothing else on this, should we move to accept this as first reading, cause public publication on the website for five days, minimum of five days, and schedule it for second reading and potential final vote at our next monthly meeting?
I agree.
So moved.
Motion made by Margaret to consider this our first reading, cause publication on the website for a minimum of five days and place on our agenda for next month as a second and potential final reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kim. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved.
So I want to go back to the thing you said about there might have to be a special meeting for us. If there's going to be a special meeting on Monday, you're going to have to get that posted tomorrow. Just to.
It's an emergency. That's true.
But I'm just saying, tomorrow's the 48-hour notice.
Today's not April 3rd.
I just wanted to put that out there because it's easy to say, oh, if we're running a meeting Monday, but when you're having a Monday meeting, Thursday is your, is your posting deadline. You're going to love me when you say, oh, yeah.
No, no.
This is why Kim is so valuable to us.
Right. So let's, let's post the emergency meeting for, the meeting for Tuesday, half hour before the Select Board meeting.
Okay.
I mean.
So I mean, you have till Friday to post it.
Yeah. So I at least, I mean, I have no idea if Tommy even knows this is coming. I haven't yet. So who's the vice chair?
Margaret.
Oh, we're going to work terms out just fine.
Yeah, we'll be fine.
If he's unavailable. All right. Next item, IT contract update. Who's running point on this?
That's me.
Okay.
So B and C are really speaking to the transition plan from the 100% external IT contract to a hybrid model where network security is, is going as a contract out. And actually, Assistant Superintendent Fredette ran the, ran the search. We got four quotes. One of the quoters subsequently withdrew, and we were left with three viable quotes. We checked, Michael checked references and did work to make sure that procurement-wise, we were following our procurement agent's advice. And we found Twin Lakes is the, the company that will serve as the, as the network security contractor. They, though they were not the lowest bid, they were the most on target with respect to services. They had the best recommendations, and they met the criteria of the posting, the RFQ, I should say.
So Twin, wait, Twin Lakes was the issue of the award?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. And I just, I met with Suzer's CEO personally, just to communicate with him. I felt we owed him the respect after the, the years that we've worked with them. We had a great meeting. We have a plan for transition from Suzer to Twin Lakes. And in my conversation with Kimberly, I had just said, you know, in the past, the superintendent had signed the contract. She said, absolutely, just you need to inform the school committees of the new contract services for network security. The second part here, C, the IT salary stipend, is the, the position that was discussed initially at the ADC, when we wanted to have all services internal, but it was, it was cost prohibitive. So the IT director is going to be an internal employee. He or she is going to have a .2 and stipend of hours per week and 20 days over the summer to fulfill the duties of the IT director. And he'll be overseen, or she'll be overseen by Michael Fredette. And each of the principals has a plan for IT support in the building, a tech in the building. So that's not changing. But there were questions about how we were going to support the, the students in each building, but that, that really isn't changing. It's, that was always, that always lived in the building's budgets.
So the .5 that historically has been at Norris will remain at Norris under the direction of the building principal?
The building principal.
In conjunction with this IT person?
Yep.
Okay.
And, and so really, what, what I'm asking for is an approval of the job description for that .2 position and the stipends that go with it. There were questions last night and the previous night about the scope of the work, but the work really hasn't changed over time. And the plan that Michael has put together with the principals, with our local experts, we are confident that we're going to be able to get the work done.
And the $41,183.80 that makes up the cumulative .2 plus stipends.
Exactly.
Is already built into the central office budget and allocated down through.
It is. Okay.
Discussion? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the job description of HRSD, Director of Information Technology, revised as of April 1st, 2025?
So moved.
Moved by Kim.
Seconded.
Seconded by Margaret.
You get to wait switch this time.
Wait, is this going to be, so is this point to a new person coming in, or is this someone who is in the school who is taking on additional responsibilities?
The latter.
Okay. I was going to say, that's.
Yeah, and everything's, everything's in place. So it's not like we're starting from, starting over. Everything's in place. The high school still has a tech position. Norris does. There's a position being split between New Hingham and West Hampton. And then Williamsburg also has their internal, internal tech position, so.
The person at Norris and the others' buildings are people that work there and are just getting like a stipend to be the IT person or something, right?
Um, well, the person at.
Like, is it a teacher that's also taking on the responsibility of IT?
That's part, that's part of the plan, is that we're going to.
Well, but I guess as it relates to us, at Norris, it is a, is it correct?
Right now, I have a half-time tech person. It's the same person. It will be the same person next year. It's not changing.
But that really.
Half custodian, half technology.
There you go.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, thank you.
And this person's been in that post for.
Years.
I think since I've been on the committee.
Is he the one that's doing the videos for Quidditch? Okay.
Just don't name any, don't name anybody.
She's like, yeah, the custodian does it. I was like, what? But that makes more sense now. Thank you.
So there's a motion made and seconded. Hearing no additional discussion. All those in favor of the job description approval as of April 1st, 2025, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining. Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously.
Good work for them. The job description, .2 and D.
Ongoing business. School choice. Do we have an update?
Oh, yes. We, we still are at the same place that we were. We actually had two more students pop up from Southampton that weren't on the census. So we're at 62, including the two.
Kindergarteners?
Yes. Including the two that we already accepted for school choice that were siblings. So my recommendation is not to add any more.
Did you, did you tell me that we're going to only have one kindergarten class in the worst case scenario?
Please don't start any rumors.
I'm just asking for clarification. I know, I know. I looked at the list of it first before I said that statement.
Your face.
Okay. So there's no action required by the committee. We're holding fast at just sitting at the two, and you're going to close out. And the, and the two that are coming in are, their siblings are already in the system.
Yes.
Which is one of the requirements of school choice, to be clear. If we have any good question at town meeting about it.
Yes.
Okay. And while it's not on the agenda, I believe. Okay. Um, and while it's not on the agenda, I believe, um, timeliness is in it, so I'm going to, um, risk a violation of discussing a matter that's not on the agenda. The time does not dictate another meeting, although we are meeting on Tuesday. Um, I believe the building principal has a, a request to make to us that requires school committee approval.
Yes.
Do I still have a job?
The sixth grade, the sixth grade teachers would like to take the sixth grade students to Sunny's Place in Summers, Connecticut, and because it's out of state, I need school committee approval. It would be June 10th, um, we would depart during school hours, and we would come back to school during school hours, so it's 9:00 AM to 2:45 PM.
Yeah, and again, traditionally, it only travel outside of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts requires school committee approval.
What is this?
Usually done in advance of permission slips going home.
Uh, it's like Kimball's. You know, we're at Kimball's Farm, um, in Westfield?
They have bumper cars there, they have.
Game of.
Game of.
Batty cage is probably.
All kinds of fun stuff.
Okay, sorry.
That's for sixth graders.
Alright, okay.
It'll be fun, it'll be fun.
So is anybody over here going to make a motion to approve this?
Yes, I, I so moved, the motion that the sixth graders can go to Summers.
Alright, second, motion, motion, motion made by Jen, seconded by Dylan. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So moved.
Would you like to sign this?
Be no other matters come before us.
Motion adjourned.
There's a motion to adjourn by Dylan, seconded by Kim.
Aye.
All in favor? Aye, opposed? Meeting is concluded at 6:51 PM. Thank you very much.